All those who are in attendance and the members of the school district that helped us prepare to get to this point. Always thank you to John and to Stacy. And we just came from a study session and we appreciate Dr. Jason Watt. And the administration that walked us through that meeting. Um, today, we, we have a couple of things that we're gonna run through as a local building authority and then also as a board of education. Before we do that, let's have the pledge of allegiance and I will lead that. Please rise. Pete after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so as the Wasatch County Local Building Authority. Um, we have one action item and it is to approve the minutes from August 18th, 2022. It was a public hearing, so I'll entertain a motion that we approve the minutes um, for that action item number one.
Motion to approve the minutes for the August 18th, 2022 public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Action item number one passes. I will also entertain a motion that we adjourn as the local building authority.
I move we adjourn as a local building authority. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Alright, very good. We are now moving into the Wasatch County School District portion of this meeting. And we'll begin with public comment. So for those in the audience, if you have a public comment, we ask you to come up to the podium, state your name. And your address and then from there you'll have two minutes to read your comment and then um, the board will respond appropriately if necessary. Please.
Alright, my name is Ally Dorian and I live off of 1200 on 1102 South 2860 East. Um, so kiddos, come up here real quick. We're missing one other family right now, they're on their way. But these are the reasons I'm here today and about eight other kiddos, here's Jayden too. Um, but I just wanted to show you like, these are the faces why I'm here and why I'm speaking out. Um, I realize we're all on the same team, we all desire kiddos to be safe. And so I am here to address the concern of the bus stop number 97 that drops the kids off on route um, on 1200. And the kids walk along 1200, there is an unpaved pathway, there's a deep ditch during the winter time, it is, it's unwalkable. Um, and so I've already spoken to Adam Hagan about it twice, he went over the rules, the regulations, the outdated information that he states with his opinion. Um, that say it is safe, that is a picture I believe I sent to Kimberly. Um, the red X is where they're getting dropped off currently, that is for the cottages children, that's about half the bus. And our kids along with, there's eight total kids in our cul-de-sac right there, but then walk along 1200. Um, and there is a very deep ditch that they have to watch out for and in the winter time it's hardly noticeable, you can't tell if you walk into it or not. Um, Adam informed me that per his decision, he deems it safe. Um, us parents would not be here if we did not feel that was incorrect. And so I would like to state that I feel it very important that we address this issue. My recommendation is simply adding less than a 60 second inconvenience to the bus driver Jeff who is more than happy to do it. Um, stopping in front of our cul-de-sac, allowing the kids on and off at their designated spot and pulling forward. And allowing the other kids for the cottages to then proceed home. Um, that ensures all the children get home safely without anyone having to walk along 1200.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any comments from the board?
I, I talked to Ally yesterday and I, you know, I told her to come and just present this to us, so. I, I don't know what, I mean, I don't know what our place is on this.
Well, I'll, I'll weigh in as the superintendent, um, you're, you're right, we're all on the same team here and we want your kids to be safe and we. We uh, you know, it's, it's not an overstatement to say that. Our teachers and our administrators and, and our board members, we, we care for these kids like they're our own and we want them to be safe and when we have. When we have accidents, uh, you know, it's heartbreaking to us and we, we, we wanna do the best we can and we've, we've had a couple of little accidents this year, but. Um, eh, this is a tough decision when you, when you consider. You know, all of the kids that are picked up on a given morning and all of the bus routes. Um, it's most, there, there's lots of requests on a given year to have their own, to have, for people to have their own bus route, they're, they're, they're numerous. And so we have to, we have to kind of weigh, um, we kinda have to weigh things and we, we typically uh. Um, you know, we typically go through a process where when people request a change, um, Mr. Hagan goes out and, and views the spot like you've said that he has and. And so uh, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a line, we can't, everybody cannot have their own bus stop. We're, we're struggling right now with bus drivers, we're, we, we have enough buses, we just don't have enough drivers. Um, I was talking to the, I was talking to the uh, the head mechanic at the bus shop, I took a district car over to have it serviced and. And uh, I said, you staying busy? And he said, I am staying busy, he says, I drove the bu, I've been driving bus this week, four days I drove the bus, so. We're having our mechanics drive just to try and keep up and, and so as a, as an organization, you know, we wish. It seems like an easy thing, we wish we could, we could all just, you know, grant every one of these requests. And, and we, we just, we can't and we, we continue, you know, we, we brought it to the board a few times, even as it relates to courtesy riders. We have a lot of courtesy riders in this district and every time we bring that to the board, the board says, no, don't kick the courtesy riders off if you can help it, just. A courtesy rider is someone that fits outside, they're a little bit outside of the law on the distance they are from school. But if the bus is going by their house, then we stop and pick them up anyway. And so I, I just, I just want it to be known and for the record that. We, we really are trying to do the very best we can here and we, and we do care about each of our children and, and we want them to be safe, so. I, I think what I would, what I would suggest to the board is if the board would like me to. Um, I can grab one of the other district administrators, um, and we can go for a little, a little ride out here and take a look at this ourselves and then maybe report that back to the board. Um, how, how we view it and, and uh, if we, if we feel like we need to make an, an exception here, so we'll, we'll, we'll grant you, you that ma'am, though. We, I will come look at it myself.
I appreciate it, I don't feel like I'm asking like for him to go outside of his realm, he passes where I'm asking him to stop. So I'm not trying to inconvenience him, it's just simply, it's on his route, it's just to make an additional stop to ensure our kids don't get hit on 1200 or fall down that ditch.
We, we, we understand and, and you, you understand as well that there are lots of those requests that you're, we're coming by and we just, we just can't, the buses can't stop every time there's. A child in a house, that we have to have them come together at a certain. And, and I'm not saying, I'm not making an assessment on what's here, I'm just saying, we don't stop, you know, at every, at every, every requested place, we can't. We're, we're, we're spread really thin, we're trying to do the best we can. I, I, I will come look at it myself, I'll, I'll talk with the board about it and uh, we'll get back to you. Cause we, we do take your request very seriously.
Are these all the kids that ride on the bus?
This is Tammy, I'm gonna have her speak too. But she, they've lived there and she's been the one actually for over a year requesting this, but she's hit a dead end, no one ever con, contacts her back, so. I can't, I just moved here this year and I went, no way, we've got five-year-olds, six-year-olds, th, this is the crew minus. We've got Jayden and we've got one other kid, so these are the kids that are being told to walk along 1200. The other kids in the cross, or in the cottages are older and I would love to know if their parents would be okay having their children who are even older walk the route our kids walk. If we moved the stop and just said, hey, let's stop in front of the cul-de-sac instead of this. And I don't think the parents would be too happy about that.
What time do they get dropped off?
At 3:49.
Okay. I think it'd be good to see what happens at 3:49 and watch the walk.
It's busy.
Will you uh?
I, I go there every day in my car, cause I don't trust the kids nor any driver. I've had two, two cars go over the white line already with the kids walking and there's a Boyd, Boyd. Um, who walks along there and the kids are very uncomfortable with him and there's been incidences that are not the best.
The happy wonder.
Yeah. And so it's just, I, I think there's a lot of potential risk with our kids walking, I know it's not a long distance, but I also feel like because of it's not its long distance, it's a very. Simple fix in my view, but I would appreciate you going out and checking.
Can we have your number?
Uh, Kimberly does.
Okay.
So, thank you.
If we can coordinate it, we'll maybe have you come out.
I'd be happy to.
If you're available when we come walk.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, whoa, you kids aren't going anywhere, we want everybody that's come up to the microphone and tell us your name. Justin, can you help grab a chair for him? Or somebody, you want, come on up and stand on a chair, it'll be fine. Who wants to come first? Thank you, Justin.
We just wanna say hi.
What's your name?
My name is Shay.
Shay, thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming Shay.
Who's next, come on, let's go, you guys all came out here for no reason, I wanna hear your name.
I'm Kirby.
Welcome.
Thanks for being there.
Thanks for coming. Tell us what grade you're in, who's next?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten, awesome.
I have a kindergartner this year too.
Okay, who's coming up? Here we go.
Um, my name's Melissa.
What grade are you Melissa?
I'm in fifth.
Fifth grade.
How's school going for you so far?
It's great.
Good, excellent.
Liked to hear that.
There we go.
My name is Izzy.
Izzy, thanks for being here.
I'm in first.
And who's your teacher?
Ms. Sweat.
Ah.
Nice, those are some good people. There's a few of them around.
Just a few.
What's your name bud?
Sam.
Sam, and what grade are you in Sam?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten, alright, welcome.
I like your shirt Sam.
You have a teacher in kindergarten?
Um, um, yeah.
Who wants her name or his name?
Mrs. Rasper.
Okay, great.
This is Jayden and he is in preschool.
Preschool.
And his teacher is Ms. Amy.
Does he go to the district preschool?
Say something in the microphone. Say hi.
Can you say hi?
No.
There we go, good job.
Um, my name is Ben.
What grade are you in Ben, what, who's your teacher?
Uh, Ms. Fuller and Ms. Bench.
Nice, and grade?
Third.
And you're in dual-merge?
Yeah.
Awesome, great. Last but not least.
My name's Parley, like Parley Canyon, I'm in second grade, my teacher is Ms. Simons.
Simons.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, thanks for coming.
Thanks everybody.
You guys can stay for the rest of the boarding, boring meeting or you can leave.
You can make it more entertaining for us.
You're welcome to make a comment if you'd like to, I don't mean to cut you off.
Okay, my biggest complaint is probably the ditch, cause I've been there, every day with Sam, thinking about from preschool. And all the kids won't play in it and there's no grade, there's nothing, and I've had a niece go under one and you don't get them out. So if you can't move the bus up, I would say talk to the county about burying that ditch. It's maybe 15 feet long, but it gets really deep.
And have you tried to reach out to the county?
Um, I've talked to people about it, but I'm just a busy person, so I don't know all the follow-ups. So, I would say that's my biggest issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Alright, are there any other public comments? Okay, we'll close the public session and we'll turn the time over to Superintendent for some celebration items.
Yes, um, I got a call from uh, Ryan Bishop, Assistant Principal of the high school the other night and he. He said, you know, uh. He said, we had a high school activity tonight. And he said, I look around and I see the good things that our people are doing and I'd, I'd love to give them a little recognition. And I said to him. Ryan, you can come to any board meeting anytime you want to do that. Um, we love to have those kind of, uh, those kind of things happen and it's so fun to have the little kids here tonight. Um, as all of you know, we've had some, we've had some meetings here in the last weeks that maybe haven't been uh, all that, all that fun. But uh, it's always fun to see what our people are doing and how they're doing it. And so we're very, uh, very happy to turn some time. Am I do, am I done?
Your timer, please finish your comment.
Very, very happy to, uh, uh, Board President, I'm gonna just wrap up my comments now, could I, could I have Kimberly's time?
I'll give you my time.
Good, I've got four more minutes. Um, we'll turn the time over to Ryan Bishop to uh, take care of this uh, recognition and come tell us what's on his mind.
I'm not sure we wanna know that. Thank you Superintendent, um, so I've actually, Stacy has a video that I just wanna play and this is an introduction to our student government. Currently at the high school and, and we have our advisor, Ms. Camps Wafford here with us tonight. But if we could just kinda play the video, it's about three minutes long that introduces all of our student gov representatives. If I could ask Principal Kelly to come up here with me, um, I just, I wanna take a minute and just talk about a couple things with our student government and. I appreciated Superintendent mentioned um, me talking to him on the phone the other night and I, I called him on the way home because I was overwhelmed with what we had going on. At the high school during our homecoming week and um. Maybe Mr. Kelly can quote the exact number, but we're just shy of 2,600 kids at the high school right now, we're big. We have 123 full-time teachers, we have um, I, I think when you add our, our, our part-time, our, you know, our, our paras, things like that, we figure. We're close to a couple hundred adults that come to work in the building every day, we're massive, we're comprehensive, we have tons of programs. And our student government and our advi, advisors have done just a phenomenal job of making Wasatch High School feel small again. And that's when I reached out to Superintendent out of one of our, uh, after one of our activities last week. And we haven't felt like that for a long time, but I just wanna talk about a couple things that they've done this year. They've done the Week of Welcome, which was basically a themed day, every day, the first full week of school after our freshman first weekend, um. They planned the opening assembly, they were integral in our freshman first assembly. Um, they've already run a club rush, they've got 78 clubs, signed up active clubs at the high school for kids to get involved in. They've actually been relentless on our student body about being involved and being driven to these 78 clubs. Um, they have truly made Wasatch High a contagious climate for school spirit right now. And again, we're not small, we're, we're gigantic and um, we are just so grateful that they have become, that they've, you know, since we've gone through the COVID and, and advisor change with, with. Ms. Camps Wafford being her second year, we're just so grateful to them that they've made us have this small feeling. We never get positive feedback, Mr. Kelly, myself, Ms. Jarvy, Ms. Wright, Ms. King, we just don't get positive feed that, back that much. And last week, we had many parents and hundreds of kids reach out to, to all of us individually and tell us how much fun they had during homecoming week. How the dress-up days, the theme days, the dance, the assembly, the parade, the powder puff game, all the different things that our student government planned and organized, how it tied them back to the school. And now if we could bring up Ms. Camps Wafford. I want Mr. Kelly to kinda present her to this award here and we kinda had this corny idea after we talked to Superintendent. That we were gonna try to bring a group here as much as we could and we were gonna give them a wow award. And what the wow award was, was just to signify that they've made a difference at Wasatch High School and I'm gonna try real hard not to get emotional. But I cannot talk about Drew's leadership, it is unmatched. I have 26 years in the school system and I've had the opportunity to be at four different school districts and I have never seen a student government advisor. Do and dedicate the time and the effort that she has and rather than me or Mr. Kelly or anyone else to stand up here and talk about. Her energy and the things that she's done with her school, we've asked a couple of our, our student body officers um, to write up a couple things and, and they wrote up a lot and I'm just gonna share. Uh, and, and we've asked them to write her some cards which we're gonna give to her tonight, but I'm just gonna share a couple snippets of what the student government advisors that you met on this video are saying about her. Okay, this is addressed to Ms. Camps and it said, and, and this is kind of in the middle of, of, of a thing that Reagan Corbridge, one of our senior representatives wrote to her. You lead with so much heart and your students can feel it, you connect with your students in a way that I have never seen before. Instead of being above your students, you befriend them and you make sure that they are always doing well, well, because of this, they work hard for you. Again, that's from Reagan Corbridge. Another one is from our student body president, Jenna Mahoney, and she says, you have not only changed the culture of Wasatch High School. But the lives of so many students, you make each student feel valued and important every day. You are a phenomenal leader and I am so humbled and grateful to have the opportunity to serve alongside you. You have changed the way I view leadership and taught me how to create deeper, more meaningful relationships. And this last one that I wanna read to you is kinda, sums up what I've been talking about a little bit and this is from Hank Hansen, who's also a junior representative. And he said, Ms. Camps, you bring so much joy and enthusiasm into a very stressful or tricky situation. Even though you have so much going on as an advisor and teacher, you are always motivated to move the ball forward, increase productivity and do what is right for Wasatch High. And to me, that just sums up what we have going on at the high school right now, we're big, we're gigantic, you open up a closet and there's somebody working in it. You uh, you, you go to a classroom and it's to the brim and Mr. Kelly and I had an opportunity to walk around during our Excel time today and we kinda commented at the end. That, that, it, it's just, it's almost overwhelming how big we feel, but Ms. Camps and our student government has really changed that climate and culture and made us feel small again because of the involvement and how they've tied. Students and adults back to that, that Wasatch High pride and spirit. We love you Drew, we thank you and we're glad to honor you tonight. Do you want Drew to say something? I think Principal Kelly would like to say something too.
We want a pitcher, we want everybody that's here to support Drew to come up afterward and we can have a pitcher. You bet, absolutely.
Um, as a principal. Drew, thank you, Ryan said it, he's a lot better with words than I am, but what we have at the high school doesn't mean that we don't need a new high school either. But. What Drew has done with the, with the student government is, is pretty incredible, you, you have kids coming excited about things, if you guys came to the homecoming game. It was, it was packed, um, we had kids that couldn't even fit in the student section because so many kids want to participate in, in what's going on at Wasatch and so. As we went around the parade route, all these kids, these little elementary kids wanting to, you know, they're singing the fight song and so it's a special thing, but it's. Because of what Drew has done and the student government and Mr. Sproul that really make the high school kinda have that heartbeat, so Drew, thank you.
Um, Matt couldn't be here tonight and I was texting him, it's his anniversary and I was texting him, I was like, I don't know, we have to go to board meeting for some reason, I was like, I hope I don't have to speak, what if I just wore jeans, he's like, I think you should put a skirt on. So, thank you Matt, um, it's funny, I honestly thought someone else was getting something tonight, it was not, this is the last thing on my mind today, um. I am very weepy, um, this is my dream job, like, I love every aspect of this and I remember when Todd and Claire interviewed me five years ago now. I remember one of the questions that every secondary teacher gets asked is what type of extracurriculars would you wanna do and I was like, oh, I love student government, like I did it in high school and I came from Moab, so it's a teeny tiny school, like we played Wasatch when I was in high school. And it's funny because, I mean, I'm two years in and I remember last homecoming week, I was so exhausted and I was like, holy crap, I don't know that I can do this again. And then prom happened and COVID prom happened and all the things and um, Friday night after the football game and I mean, I worked 16-hour days, homecoming week. I sat in my car and I just like cried, but I thought it would be like an emotional like meltdown cry, like holy crap, I'm a terrible teacher, sorry to your kids that I currently have, whose midterm grades just barely got updated. Um, but it was just like so much joy that I felt because this is truly a dream to um, rub shoulders as students to often meet with Justin and Tara and Ryan and Lana and. And to be able to really figure out the climate and culture of Wasatch High School, so thank you, this was such a big surprise, so thank you very much.
Before the pitcher. I think the board has a couple of comments too before the pitcher.
I'll sit here.
I, I just wanna share a personal parent story.
It's totally fine Ken.
So when Josh was a sophomore, anyone who knows Josh. So when Josh was a sophomore, anyone who knows Josh has his days. And Drew was such an amazing teacher for him. She, she helped him out tremendously. And I think it was spring break.
You were on a cruise, right?
Yeah, we were getting ready to go on a cruise and we were, he was really, really struggling with his grade. And Drew just went out of her way to help him, to make sure that he needed to do, you know, what he needed to do. And, and she helped him. She was there for him. And so this is just who you are. You know, it's not just student government, but this is who you are. And you care about each and every one of your students. And as a parent, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Just from my standpoint, you're an example. Example to all the students that want to grow up to be like you. And I know you may not look at yourself that way, but from our standpoint, we look at you as a leader. And I know that the leaders that work with you speak very highly of you and wish they had 143 of you running around, helping and taking the initiative. I think that that's where your strength lies, is you see something and then you do it. You take that initiative, you take the motivation to do things that need to be done and don't have to be told or coached or directed to do it. And that's special. Not all people have that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on, you got all five of them.
Bring it on.
I was just going to say, you know, I met, I talked to Drew a little bit ago and she, she brought up my son and, and knew everything that he was doing now. Oh, how's he doing? And she, she knew exactly what he, this is in college. She, she even follows him after in their, their course of education. So, appreciate everything you do for everybody. And take care of yourself. Thanks.
Go for it, Cory. Okay. I was just sitting here, the quote I was given when I started teaching, I feel like you are a huge example of this. And that is, they don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. And your kids know, your students, we call them kids, but your students know how much you care about them as individuals and as people. And that's why they love you back. And I know that's not the PC thing to say, but you're doing an amazing job and you're making an impact. That if you think about how much you impact that one kid, and then it snowballs to their kid. And hey, I had this teacher back in the day. That's what you're doing. And you are doing an excellent job. And all I can say is thank you for the time and dedication and blood, sweat, and tears. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Drew, but I don't know you.
It's okay. I seem to know everybody but you and your kids, Cory.
But I did want to make a couple of comments to you and to your high school administration. My wife attended the homecoming assembly. Way too many kids in there. She said, I could not wait to get out of there. So, we do need to build your new school. She, she come home and told me, you're, you're doing the right thing by, by getting a new school built. My niece was voted the homecoming queen. And she's Down Syndrome. Most of you guys know that, but that was really a special thing. That, that the culture you guys have created there, that students would recognize the impact that that could have on a, on a little girl that probably doesn't understand the impact of that was really, really touching to me. My, my brother, my twin brother, he called me and he said, hey, I just got a call from someone on the student government and said, Lauren's going to win. And he said, does she have a date? My brother was like, no, she doesn't have a date. But he was like, I want to take her out. So, so that's the type of people you're working with and the influence you have on them. So, I thought that was really, really special. And, and I'm not sure, well, I know, when I was a 17-year-old kid, a senior in high school, I didn't have that. I don't think I could have done something like that. So, anyway, thank you. And thank you for the, the whole administration, for their culture you've created at the high school. So, thank you.
Let's have everybody come forward. Let's have the board come down.
Let's take a picture.
Let's get a good picture.
We love pictures around here. What was the last picture I saw? I was all in. I thought, geez, we're, we look good enough.
If you guys would kind of make yourselves fit in front of the table, that makes it a really good size. The administration goes mental.
All right, Justin, carry on the good work. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for having our back on that with those kids. All right. Thanks, everyone. All right, excellent. Thank you. Love the celebration. Brings a smile to all of our faces. Okay, we'll move on to the consent items. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent items as listed.
I motion that we can approve the consent items as listed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, consent items pass. Okay, into the action items. We'll bring the esteemed Dr. Waddam again. He's had a heavy, heavy lift tonight. So, thank you.
Yeah, real heavy. I'm here to present to the board the Wasatch High School attendance policy, which is really a update to a pre-COVID policy that makes it more compliant with legislative bills that have passed in recent years. And as we discussed in study session, just recommend that we put it out for review.
I move that we put the Wasatch attendance policy out for 30-day review. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, item number one passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, number two.
Hey, Tom, really quick. On that, if anybody's watching and cares, like, look up our study session. We talked about that for a good 45 minutes.
Yep. Thank you. I, I forgot to ask for any comments. That's,
It's okay.
We, we did. We spent all of study session talking about that. So, there is a video that will describe our attendance policy at length. All right, Zach, welcome.
Thank you. So, I'm here to present to the board a quote for wrestling mats for the new girls wrestling program at Wasatch High School. You can see from the picture up there, these are, these are two-sided mat. The one on the left will be the competition side of their mat. The one on the right's the, the reverse side of it. They can flip them over, practice mat. This quote is from Resolute. They are the premier mat company in the world, really. We are sole sourcing this item mainly because they're the best. They, they're the only ones that provide the safety that we need in the mats. They're, they're an inch and a quarter thick mat. They have a, you know, they have a special means of attaching to each other. You don't have to use tape or mat tape on them. And they're just the best. So, really, that's the whole reason we, we would sole source these to Resolute is there's nobody else that makes a comparable mat to them.
What's the life on those?
So, they have a three-year warranty. The mats in the high school now are original. So, and they're going to get used probably a lot more. So.
Well, and I'm looking, it says that these Resolute mats last up to twice as long as the standard ones. So, instead of having to buy new ones?
Twice as long on the surface. And also, we're flipping them for, you know, for practice. So, each side potentially lasts twice as long as a, as a standard mat. So.
And they can be refinished. You send a few in over the years to be refinished.
Okay.
They, they keep going. They're, they're the standard, for sure.
Go ahead, sorry.
Do you, do you want to tell us about the girls wrestling program?
I'd love to. You bet. We are, we're really excited about girls wrestling. High School Activities Association, I think they're, they're trying really hard to, to expand their girls offerings. They have been doing that the last few years. And I think girls wrestling was an easy one. There were a lot of girls coming out for wrestling and, and they, they had to wrestle with the boys. And over the years, there's always been a few girls wrestling and wrestling on the boys' teams and with the boys and at the freestyle tournaments. And that number has grown over the years. And, and, you know, in the, the last four or five years, there's been, you know, girls from the state of Utah go back and wrestle in the national girls high school tournament and, and things of that nature. And, and this would be the, this would be the second year or maybe the third that the girls wrestling is now a fully sanctioned sport by Utah High School Activities Association. We, you know, even though we're the, we're the, we're one of the premier programs in the state, we, we weren't the early adopters of, of a girls' program. There were several other schools that have adopted it before we did. And, and I, from what I understand, there's, there's probably 30 or 40 high schools now that are, that are offering girls wrestling. It's, it's really popular. And, you know, I think one of the best things, you know, I think one of, one of the best things about a girls' wrestling program is they, is they no longer have to wrestle with the boys. And I'll tell you who it's hardest on. It's, it's not the girls. It's, it's the boys. And I've had boys that had to wrestle girls in, in high school and really good wrestling girls. And it's, it's, it's really emotionally tough on a lot of our young men to have to wrestle a young lady.
And their fathers.
And their fathers, you bet. And so, so it was, I, I think this is a really good move by the, by the high school activities. And I think of all the new programs that they've sanctioned in the, in recent years, this is, this has been just immediately really well picked up and attended and taken care of.
Isn't it kind of nationwide that women's wrestling will be kind of the great frontier in a lot of ways too, in terms of marketing and apparel and the, the whole kind of push around the country? It's, it's kind of a new, new burgeoning sport.
It, it is. And it's, it, I, we're, we're seeing it, we're seeing it come. I believe it's even in the Olympics at this point now. It made it to the Olympics before it didn't.
We have a huge, like, our team is,
How many do we have?
Twenty to thirty is what they had show up to practice last week.
How many did you say?
Between 20 and 30, they've had at every practice so far.
I had the opportunity to meet the, the coach that we just hired and we're really excited about her. She wrestled in high school at Maple Mountain and she went somewhere to the Midwest and wrestled in a, in a collegiate, a girls collegiate program and did very well at the, at the NCAA girls wrestling tournament. She's a, she's a really dynamic coach and I think the girls will really be drawn to her. She'll be a great leader for that program. And as Zach was mentioning, they had a, they had kind of, it'll, it'll be during the winter. If you're familiar, familiar with the high school layout, there's a, there's a fitness room that we put some, kind of some old fitness equipment in back when we opened the school in, in '09. And that, that equipment is pretty much ready for, The boneyard. The, the trash bin. And it's kind of machines with cables and stuff that we just don't use anymore. And we've, you know, we've established the varsity weight room over in West Campus. And so, we've got plenty of space there to turn that particular room into the girls' wrestling room. So, they will not have to share the boys' wrestling room. I think it'll be great for them to have their own program and have their own room. And, and we're just really excited about, about what's going to happen. This, this early meeting that we had, Zach, did you say about 30 girls showed up to that first meeting?
Yeah, Mr. Kelly and I talked to one of them today and she said, good days is 30 and bad days, it's, you know, 15 to 20. But they've had as many as 30 show up. So.
And if I can, really quickly, before you, before you, before you vote on this, while Zach's still, still here, I, I want to give a little shout out to Zach. And I'm not sure why I'm so emotional this evening, but, but Zach has some big shoes to fill. And we, we had the opportunity, a bunch of us, to go to, to go to Francis's mother's viewing. And I believe Keith stayed for the funeral. And, and, you know, Francis Harrison is, is a legend in this district. And the things he was able to do and accomplish, and it's hard, it's hard to fill those type of shoes. And I, I want to just tell you that Zach's doing a, a great job.
Thank you.
And I love how he, I love how he leads out. I love how he interacts with his, with his guys. And he's been upstairs. And it's, it's hard to be one of the guys and then be the leader of the guys.
Very hard.
And I've, I've done it myself a time or two. And you're doing great, Zach. And we, we appreciate the job that you're doing. And we appreciate that we made the, the best choice to get you in there and put you to work for us. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. That means a lot. So, this part, to make Keith happy, and I'm sure the board, so you can see that the total quote is $30,233.32. This did come along after we had done our capital projects list. So, there wasn't a capital line item for this. Our capital projects have come in about $100,000 under what we expected. So, we do have funds in the, in the capital projects budget to cover this. So, should be good with there. So, it's my recommendation that the board accept the quote from Resolute for mats for the girls wrestling room at Wasatch High School for $30,233.32.
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments for Zach?
I would just say, thanks for getting them in there.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks. Number two passes.
Thanks, Zach.
All right. We'll bring up esteemed Director of Technology, Dustin. Thank you, Dustin, for everything you're doing.
So, this agenda item tonight is to renew our Nutanix licensing and service support for three years. Nutanix, just to give you a general idea of what it is, it, it houses all of our servers and data storage for the district. Most of it anyways. And we've had it for a few years. It's been rock solid and it's time to renew it for another three years.
I move that we approve the Nutanix license and support renewal as presented. Second.
Any questions for Dustin or comments from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you. And the three passes. All right. We'll take a short meeting any, any day of the month, any month of the year. We'll work into,
But not two days.
Not two days. Hey, speaking of that. All right, we do have to roll into an executive session. So, I'll entertain a moment, a motion that we adjourn to the executive session.
Motion to adjourn to the executive session.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Thanks, everybody.
Hey, thanks for coming, students. Tell us why you're here. Just because you want to learn about the school board a little bit more?
Yes, so all three of us are in the teaching profession program at high school.
Oh, that is awesome.
Why don't you come on up and tell us who you are and a little bit about why you're in that program? And what is the program?
We're, we're really excited about this program and,
You guys can all, we're going to make all of you come up.
We're not going to executive session yet.
That's boring. This is fun.
Yeah, tell us your name. Tell us what year you're in. And tell us a little bit about why you're in the program.
I'm Mary Anger. I'm in 11th grade. I'm in TAPS because I found it really interesting as like a choice to become a teacher. And I might want to preserve being an elementary school teacher.
Cool.
And what have you learned by being here today?
And thank you for being willing to be a teacher.
Yeah.
Want to be a teacher, not a board member. That's what you want to do.
Because we give you raises.
Well, I won't say.
All right. My name's Clint Bouchard. I'm an 11th grader. And I originally joined the TAPS program because I saw, when I was walking through the halls of my middle school, I saw a poster for teachings of profession. And I thought, I saw a poster for teachings of profession and I thought, I always liked my teachers, so I figured I'd join. And then I forgot about it. And then um, my ninth grade year, I was looking through my PCCR list, all the possible classes I could take. And I saw TAPS and I immediately signed up for it, went through the entire first semester and then dropped another class second semester so I could go into TAPS two. And I finished TAPS two and this year I'm in TAPS three CE along with these two ladies right here. And it is by far the best class at the high school in my opinion. Um, and I want to be a middle school,
Who teaches that?
Uh, Ms. Payne. Ms. Payne. She's amazing. And I actually had the unique opportunity of writing a book in her class that I got published. So I actually published a book in her class, which was amazing. And then I hope to be a middle school math teacher, which a lot of people say I'm crazy for. But I lo, I absolutely love middle school.
I started, I started my career as a middle school math teacher. So, you're gonna love it. It's awesome.
I'm excited.
Can I ask you uh,
Oh, go ahead.
Can I ask you who your parents are?
Um, Daryl Bouchard and Jennifer Bouchard.
So, great, great family. Um, your mom is one of our great math teachers at Wasatch High School.
I hope I can be as amazing as she is.
She does a great, a great job. Your, your dad's helped us on some committees and different things and uh, great supporters of this district and awesome to see you following in their footsteps.
Thank you.
Best of luck and make sure you come and apply here at Wasatch when you get, when you get your,
I'm counting on it.
We'll have a spot for you buddy.
We'll have two high schools by then too.
Yeah, yeah.
Where do we get your book?
Um, I believe you can get it on Amazon or just like any ebook place too.
What's the name of it?
Um, Pictures. Called Pictures. And then I, there's only an Amazon ebook, the physical copies I have. So if you want one.
We know how to find you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm Addison Reese. I also went through the Teaching as Profession one and two and now I'm in three. I'm also a junior. Um, I also want to be a teacher. I'm trying to decide between upper elementary and uh, high school English. Yeah, Ms. Payne is great and these have been like my favorite classes. You learn so much and um, we get to observe teachers and different things throughout the school year in um, all three of our classes. So that's really cool. And then we also have a club at Rising and we compete. Last year we competed nationally and we had a couple uh, students in our class that actually won nationally. So that was really cool. And anyway, it's just a really cool class and um, it's really fun. So, yeah.
That's great. So is this an assignment tonight?
So, we want, so our assignment,
Self-sanctioned.
It's to get involved in the community. So, or like, um, just to get involved in different teaching opportunities. And so we decided to come here for one of those things.
So, as we move uh, as we move forward, outstanding job, all three of you. So well spoken.
Yeah.
Way to just step to the mic and speak, uh, very impressive. You're gonna be outstanding teachers. Don't let anything deter you. You're gonna have people trying to talk you out of going into education and stick to your guns. It'll, it'll be one of the most rewarding um, professions that, that you can choose and you're, you're well on your way. And I can just see all three of you being so outstanding at, at, at what, what you'll end up doing. And, and stay the course. And um, the other thing I would say is let's make sure we, we have these guys' names and contact information. As we, once in a while, we need a student on a committee or two as we, as we do things and we hope to do a little more of that. And we'd like to be able to call on you to come help us out. So, thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you.